Don, can we do the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Eaton?
Present.
Ms. Davis?
Present.
Mr. Finerty?
Present.
Mr. Patel?
Present.
Mr. Chairman?
Present.
Okay, you need approval of February 23 meeting minutes. I need a motion and a second.
All move.
All right.
Second.
Second. Okay, Don, on the approval of the minutes, take the roll. Mr. Eaton?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Finerty?
Aye.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
All right. Approval of minutes carries five to nothing. Okay, is there someone here for the project up at Peterbilt Project? No, we're gonna do you guys, we're waiting for that stuff to come for you guys, so we'll State your name and everything for the record.
Good evening, everybody. My name is George Albert. We're representing Hunter Truck Sales, Hunter Realty LLC with regard to the Peterbilt Project on Stafford Ave.
Okay, tell us whatever you want to tell us.
Absolutely. Thank you for your time. We're excited to be here, finally, after working on this project for about three years through the pandemic. Hunter Truck Sales is working to relocate their facility, which is currently in Tannersville, on 611, into the city of Scranton. We're proposing the construction of a new sales service center on Stafford Ave, right off of Davis Street. There's gonna be two buildings proposed for this project, one single 38,000 square foot building, which would include the sales center and maintenance facility, and then a standalone approximately 10,000 square foot body shop. Plans in front of the commission tonight. As I mentioned, it's located right on Stafford Ave, off of Davis Street, and this project will, upon its completion, create approximately 80 new jobs in the city. So we're excited to represent Hunter Truck and Peterbilt with this new venture and look forward to working with the city to get it done.
Sounds like a great project. Is it similar to the one that's on 80?
It is.
Yeah. I see that every time I go out to Jersey.
Yep, absolutely. So, yeah, Hunter Truck is out of Pittsburgh, and they have several locations along the northeast corridor, and again, they're relocating the facility from down in Tannersville up to the city of Scranton.
Commission, have any more, any questions for them?
Just out of curiosity, those 80 jobs created, how many are permanent and how many are temporary with construction?
All 80 are new jobs, permanent jobs, related to the facility. Construction jobs here, probably about 150 during the tenure of the new building construction.
And do you have a timeline and how long the building will take?
We want to get it up as soon as we can because we have to vacate the Tannersville facility in July, so we're gonna have a gap in our service. We're expecting, hopefully, to finish this project by early winter of '24.
And how far along are you currently with construction because site work has begun, correct?
Correct. So the site's been graded, we've been awarded a grading permit by the city, it's been graded, all the stormwater improvements are in, all the erosion control features are installed. So presently, right now, we're just, we're waiting to start foundations.
Just out of curiosity, so you have to vacate your current premise by July of this year, and you're not gonna have your new building until early '24, is that right?
Correct.
Wow.
So we're desperately searching for a temporary location.
Oh, well, you anticipated my question.
We have a couple options, and hopefully, we find something in the city or close there, too, where we can get our services started.
So, Don, are we, is this a project that's already been in, we haven't, or are we just taking it in? No, this is ready for final approval. I gave you the engineer's letter, we're down to six comments. There, I mean, besides signing the sheets and everything, which we don't have them do until it's approved, which is the first two, the other four are outside agency approvals. So we would typically grant a conditional approval conditioned on them receiving those outside agency approvals. All right. So you can bring it to a vote? Yes, yes. The motion would be for approval of the final land development plan. So the commission all understand?
The motion would be for conditional final approval.
Yeah, conditional, yeah. Final approval conditioned on the four conditions, three, four, five, and six. Well, we can make it conditional on all six.
Okay. I will second the motion.
We have a second? Yeah, Jack seconded.
I seconded.
Oh, I'm sorry, who was first?
General.
Well, we can make this more formal. I'll make the motion that we grant final approval conditional upon meeting the six provisions outlined in the April 5, 2023 letter.
And I will second that motion again.
Thank you. On the motion, Mr. Eaton?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Finerty?
Aye.
Mr. Patel?
Aye.
And Mr. Chairman? You got your project going there, you're all set. Motion carries five to zero. Look forward to seeing you there.
Likewise. Thank you so much for your time, we look forward to...
Thank you for coming.
You as well.
Okay, so like, is it set up for the girls? Yeah, so on the agenda, we have a guest presentation, the Penn State University Local Climate Action Program, and this is a presentation on the climate action initiatives.
Thank you. We're getting set up a little bit. We also have one of our colleagues on the Zoom, so we'll play it by ear and put her up to the microphone when it's time to present. But thank you for having us, we're really excited to be here. I'm from New Jersey, so I've never been to Scranton, so this is my first time. And Emma, my colleague here, has been here quite a number of times throughout her childhood, so this is really wonderful opportunity. Okay, lovely. Thank you very much. Can everyone see that all right?
Yep.
So, well, again, hi, thanks for having us. I'm Bella Bersenio, and I'm part of just one of our team members who worked with Craig Beavers and Eileen Cipriani in the Office of Community and Economic Development over the better part of a year now. So this is really the culmination of a year's work of collaboration between Penn State University, us students, our advisors, Peter Buck and Brandy Robinson, and some Scranton folks. So we're very excited to kind of dive into what this year has entailed.
Would you be comfortable if I just spoke with this microphone, or would you like me to go to the other side?
Either one, so we could hear you.
Okay. So, climate change is causing shifts across the globe, but specifically, the 2021 Pennsylvania Climate Impacts Assessment states that climate change is going to impact Pennsylvania in the following ways, whether indirectly or indirectly, and this impacts Scranton as well. Increasing average temperatures and heat waves puts stress on infrastructure and heating and cooling facilities. Heavy precipitation leads to inland flooding. And indirectly, landslides, sea level rise, and severe tropical and extratropical cyclones leads to human displacement and supply chain disruption, which can also impact our way of life. This is why it's more important than ever to adapt and implement climate change adaptation tactics such as reducing greenhouse gas emissions by municipality.
And while climate change definitely presents some threats, we also see it as presenting opportunities for municipalities, for individuals, for communities to look long term and see what is sustainable, you know, 10, 20, 30 years from now. But just to kind of tie it back to this commission and why it's relevant outside of some of the, you know, climate-related things we'll feel as individuals and communities, land use is inextricably tied to climate change as well. So it's a beneficial thing that we have more land cover, more green spaces, that are able to essentially reduce greenhouse gas emissions in the atmosphere, therefore combating climate change. But just as it's a beneficial relationship, it's also reciprocal in the sense that negative impacts have not only changing climate-related consequences, but land use consequences as well. So we know that increasing temperatures, increasing flooding events, precipitation dictate what crops farmers can plant, dictates the land use applications for agriculture following a flooding event, which are expected to become more and more frequent. So keeping these things in mind and seeing how our land use planning in the future is going to run into climate change is something that we want to keep as a frame as we kind of go into some of the positive sides of our collaboration this year.
So next, I'm going to spend a few moments discussing Scranton's greenhouse gas inventory, which was calculated using ClearPath, which is a greenhouse gas inventory calculation software. So here you can see a breakdown of emissions by sector and metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalents. So we have residential energy at approximately 229,000 metric tons, commercial energy at approximately 185,000, industrial at 115,000, on-road transportation, including gasoline and diesel, at 200,000. I apologize for the backlash. And solid waste at 30,000, and waste and wastewater, pretty small number, at 1,131, bringing total community-wide emissions for Scranton to approximately 763,878,000 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalents. And this is just a little visual, so you can see the largest emissions by sector is commercial energy, transportation and local sources, and residential energy. So after we completed the inventory tracking data and getting that input into the software, we then began to implement long-term forecasting and monitoring and evaluation goals. So if you look at this chart, you can see the increasing emissions from 2019, when the inventory was calculated, we used data from 2019, it was calculated last semester, all the way up until 2050. So you can see it increases, as to be expected with the increase in population, increase in development. And then we established two reduction goals. The nationally determined contributions, which are internationally agreed upon reduction standards, 80% by 2050 is the green line running pretty low across the bottom, and that's a pretty substantial reduction. A little more feasible is the Pennsylvania Climate Action Plan 26% reduction by 2025, which is the orange line, not very easy to see, but just running a little bit halfway through the emissions. So those are the two that we calculated based on standard emissions reductions. So why do we take the time? What is the importance of long-term monitoring and evaluation? It's so Scranton can achieve its seven long-term goals, and I'm gonna break down a little bit in this next slide. This is a screenshot of the available planning measures, just a few of them, the list is lengthy, available on the ClearPath software. And I listed just a few: low-flow showerheads, residential photovoltaic or solar panels, decreased food waste, energy education, LED streetlights. You'll allow me to consult my notes. Green businesses promotes economic growth, prosperity, and development, one of Scranton's seven goals. LED streetlights, residential photovoltaics, and low-flow showerheads promotes community, economic, and climate resilience, as well as energy conservation and emissions reductions, and arguably, quality and affordable housing. Lastly, energy education and public transportation and development and accessibility and mobility. So just to show that implementing these reductions, reducing Scranton's greenhouse gas emissions, is integral to help Scranton achieve its long-term economic development Your turn, Candace. Oh, hold on, we're having some trouble hearing you. Give me one second.
Hi, everyone, can you hear me?
Yep.
All right, perfect. Sorry I'm not there with you today, I actually live in Massachusetts, so I'm coming to you via stream. But I had such a great semester working with Craig and my team. As we, as a team, we created two strong policy memos for Scranton to use related to sustainability and climate action initiatives. Springfield, Massachusetts, and Providence, Rhode Island were picked on basis of similarity and Scranton's economic and cultural character, geographic and Appalachia, and relative size. Springfield's initiatives were very simple, while focusing on supportive city and stock stakeholder commitment to greenhouse gas emissions by 80% in 2050. This initial milestone includes greening grid, energy efficiency, modifications to regulatory environmental incentives, and eliciting stakeholder action. Providence was based on the three pillars of sustainability: economic validity, environmental protection, and social equality. This initiative should lay on the struggles of the 10 frontline communities fight for Okay. And go ahead, Bella, on the proposal.
Sure thing. So the other thing we did, acknowledging that Emma, Candace, and I are really graduating in 10 days, but who's counting? And what we've built with Craig over this course of year is a start, but if climate action planning is to continue beyond us, it'll likely need external consulting help. So to kind of, you know, build that foundation, we created a draft request for proposal for just that. A consultant to come in and help with their professional experiences and expertise, Scranton developed their own climate action plan. Now, that's really the end result. The consultant would be expected to do much more than just put together a plan. Considering that they might be external, a large part of their deliverables would include developing a public engagement plan, and really conducting and helping to lead those community engagement efforts. We'll go into a little bit, a little bit later, what we started to do on that front, but recognizing that Scranton has diverse groups of people, really making it accessible, having Spanish options, for example, for community engagement efforts, is something that the consultant would have to take in mind. But beyond that, we're also recommending that a consultant update the greenhouse gas inventory, like Emma just showed. It should be an annual thing because realistically, emissions change, you know, day to day, but it's much more manageable to do it year by year. So not only would they be conducting an inventory, they would also be developing a metrics reporting toolkit so that we understand what we're measuring, who is in charge of measuring it, and when, on what kind of time basis. And that would then culminate into a climate action plan, something that is probably a little bit more involved, but the groundwork is in plans such as the economic development plan and other sorts of legislation that's coming out, so. Candace, your turn.
Okay, thank you, Bella. So as Emma introduced, the sectors that needed some work were residential, transportation, and commercial sectors. As a team, we came up with funding opportunities that are existing that can be implemented immediately and are the following. A few that our team would recommend based on Scranton's highest emission categories are the Home Energy Performance Based Rebate. This is a $4.3 billion program through the Department of Energy that the state energy offices will operate. This program provides rebates for whole-home retrofit packages. In the commercial sector, we have the Clean School Bus Program. This is an existing program with $5 billion included in the IRA budget and administrated by the EPA. This program provides competitive grants and rebates to state, local governments, and nonprofit school transportation associates to replace existing school buses with zero emission vehicles. And finally, in the transportation sector, the Clean Vehicle Credit. This is a provision that is existing of $7,500 consumer tax credit for purchasing an eligible new clean vehicle. This includes UG and hybrids, hydrogen fuel cell vehicles, and it also is beginning to qualify in 2023 for pickup trucks, SUVs, and vans. Starting next year, it's really exciting that taxpayers can transfer the credit to the dealer at the time of purchase to lower the vehicle price. So all of these were good recommendations that my team want to bring forth to Scranton, considering that their biggest emissions are residential, commercial, and transportation.
So something on the community engagement side of things that we started to do was we developed a survey, and collected 107 responses from community members here, really with the intent of getting some feedback. Again, it's helpful to know what issues people care about, what priorities they really would like Scranton to focus on so that we have a baseline for when we maybe do future surveys. So we developed it to have about 15 questions, so it took people about three minutes. There wasn't an incentive with it, but we had Craig help us disseminate it in proper channels, so we were able to get good response rates. And it asked people everything about their climate change beliefs, what their priorities were, and some questions about what they enjoyed, you know, living in Scranton the most. So some of the results, the first ones come from Yale's Program on Climate Change Communication. Four questions that they labeled, they're six America's Super Short Survey, called SASSI for short, really meant to get an idea of, out of six, climate change characters, we'll call them, where do people lie? And as these results share, and I'm sorry, this is a promotional material, so Candace, I'll go back to you in a second, but what these results share is that by and large, the community was alarmed about climate change, which is the most engaged climate change character out of the six offered. And when we go to the next slide real quick for the national population estimates, comparing them to the national estimates, they are far more alarmed and concerned, and far less disengaged, doubtful, and dismissive about climate change, telling us a good bit about where Scrantonians fit on the climate change belief scale. Now we're gonna go back two slides for Candace to talk about promotional materials.
Okay, thank you, Bella. As a team, we created a promotional flyer both in English and Spanish to increase the accessibility for Scranton's residents, as well as an infographic for smaller spaces. We also introduced a QR code to make the survey easily accessible. Go ahead.
And if we go back to results, we asked, so if we go to the next slide, actually, please. When we asked them what essentially they wanted Scranton to focus on, we kind of divided that into two sort of questions. One is what is your priorities, almost like an inward-facing beliefs test, as well as what are the actionable measures that Scranton can take? And just so happened that the top three results for each of those questions really correlated with each other. So we got a really good sense of what people care about, and it's walkability, it's sustainable infrastructure, and it's also waste management and renewable energy. And when we map these onto our inventory, we see that these are some of the areas, again, transportation, residential energy, that the greenhouse gas emitting sectors really correlate with. So we started to see more of a narrative develop from there.
So on the survey, when asked how would residents like to be interacted with on behalf of the municipality, on behalf of the city, overwhelmingly, the response was a pop-up event, which is actually fantastic because this really allows the city to demonstrate its creativity. A pop-up event can be anywhere from a public art installation to a couple volunteers standing at a fold-up table with some interactive activities for children and adults to raise awareness for climate change action within the city and just in general. So we created an outline, just a template for the pop-up event, what to include, what to think about, how to engage with citizens. So that was our goal, based on interaction events. So we have several interactive components, ideas for outreach and collaboration, whoever would like to plan a pop-up event. Hopefully, we'll have a little bit of a jumpstart on the planning.
And similarly, we looked into deliberative forums as another engagement effort. This is a little bit more involved than a pop-up event, but in general, we thought it was a good community effort in terms of getting feedback from people and having them understand that this is in a debate as much as it's a deliberation of a future thinking conversation. Where do we go from here? What are solutions, as well as the drawbacks to any given number of initiatives that we might explore? And this all feeds back into the climate action plan that would be developed because we're talking out some of these issues, you know, issues that community members might run into and how they would feel about them being implemented. And so finally, I know that was a lot, just to bring it all back to this commission. When we looked at Scranton Abington's Planning Association's plan, we noted several conservation-oriented items on this plan. And again, if we can go back to the survey results, they really map onto the areas that community members care about. So when we look at public spaces and improving natural spaces that are available to the public, that's on here. Same with creating walkable and bikeable paths, that matches onto there, as well as just in general, environmental resource protection. So the basis for it is there. But just to bring it all back out and why it's important, if we go to the next slide, really, this is about the long-term growth and health of our communities. And like we kind of alluded to in the beginning, sustainability is... And like we kind of alluded to in the beginning, sustainability is, a sustainable and climate action plan would embody that. When we're looking long-term, it's how do we make communities thrive, both economically and environmentally, all while having a justice, a social justice lens? So it really isn't just the commission's responsibility, quite obviously, but we hope it's an effort that spans commissions and councils across Scranton so that we're leveraging our respective expertises to get to an overall inclusive climate action plan. So that's it from us. We will happily take any questions, and thank you so much for your time.
Questions?
Thank you for presenting and spending time thinking about Scranton and how to make it better. I guess my question is broadly speaking, from your position, how is Scranton doing overall? I mean, I know in looking at our First Order of Business, part of it was shade tree requirement for every however many square feet it's required to replace a deciduous shade tree. Beyond that, from like a third-party objective perspective, how would you say Scranton is doing overall?
A lot of our initial research on Scranton's initiatives and plans occurred last semester, but I remember that we were quite impressed with all the initiatives, especially around sustainability, economic growth, and social development. Seems well-rounded, and we're excited to see what the future holds.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think, you know, we're members of a program, so we have several other cohorts that are going through the same exact process with other municipalities. And we've heard from our mentors that Scranton and our team are well above and well ahead of other municipalities, not to, you know, do that, you know, any ill will, but just in terms of the culture and the openness to climate change, it's surprising that that's, you know, even a question, but it's something that Scranton has not had any pushback on and includes in something even as much as its economic development plan, which is a link not readily made by other municipalities. So things like the Shade Tree Commission and advisory councils that are targeted towards environmental issues is already well ahead of the game. Certainly, the emissions that we've shown are, you know, points of improvement, but everyone's trying to go through that improvement too, so it's kind of incredible where you're at already.
So I guess that sort of leads into my follow-up, what you alluded to. How does that stack up against our actual emissions? Because a plan is one thing, and it's essentially words on a piece of paper, but if emissions are not being reduced or even going up, then it's sort of for naught. So how does that line up?
I think that's where our recommendation overall for a climate action plan is where it comes into play, because while there's these efforts that certainly help, having something that's comprehensive. But has implementation teeth too, because like you said, words are words, but having people behind it and a clear idea of who will be implementing these things will have to be a citywide effort, and it'll have to be intentional effort. So I think that's kind of, I mean, add on to that, Emma, if you'd like, but.
I think with, like Bella said, in points of the implementation teeth, but with these measures, it'll be really exciting to see how these missions change even over the next five years as your developer, whoever receives the contract, starts planning, doing that annual greenhouse gas inventory. It'll be really interesting to see how it changes.
And the funding opportunities that are available right now are off the charts. I'll wait again. You know, this is a great time because there is, there are a lot of grants going around. We were just in a meeting earlier today that had, I mean, five slides worth of just different opportunities targeted towards renewable energy. So having solar be more available to residents, even ones that are in marginalized communities and might not have the means themselves to explore those, but stuff like the Inflation Reduction Act have really opened the doors for this to be an actual opportunity and something that doesn't put as much burden on each individual city wanting to explore it further.
And, oh, sorry, go.
Go ahead, Joe.
One last question, sorry. The emissions that we are producing, are they representative of the type of economy that Scranton has? Like, would it make sense that the emissions show as they do, or is there some part of that data that may seem out of whack, whereas, you know, for example, we have like a overtly large residential emission or something like that?
Unfortunately, when we got the data, it was just direct with the numbers, like the tons of it that was being produced, that we were converting into the ClearPath calculator. So we've gotten that per question, and we'd love to like break it down a little bit because of Scranton's history and acknowledging that it is industrialized, heavy, and control for that, but that's certainly a great question, and I wish I had a better answer.
No problem, thank you.
But given the industry, I mean, you can see in the breakdown, industrial energy isn't quite as comparable to residential or commercial, which is an interesting assessment given Scranton's background. So I think that would be an interesting topic for further study.
I will say we did break it down, not only by natural gas, but by anthracite coal, and that was like marginally committing to those emissions, although a lot of homes are still powered from coal. It wasn't to the degree of the emissions that natural gas contributed.
And you see, natural gas is around 153,000, anthracite coal about 96,000 for residential energy at the top.
Thank you.
This is really interesting. Thank you for all the time and effort. Could you just get that, there's this slide that had the kind of specific initiatives.
There we go. This one, yes, thank you. So to me, this is right, what's actionable that we can do. So each of these are programs that currently exist and have funding available?
Did you hear that question Candace?
Yes, yes, they currently exist. We did highlight three that we thought that Scranton might, might like or might, you know, prefer, but there is a lot of funding opportunity beyond this. This was something that I put together, and it's also available in the packet that Craig has. But did you have a question about a specific funding opportunity?
No, I think it's just, you know, some of this is, is education to know that there are programs out there that can help people without maybe them having a, you know, significant capital output themselves. So do you have recommendations on how have other communities spread the word about some of these initiatives? So for instance, the Home Energy Performance Based Rebates, right, the first one listed under residential, I'm guessing that's things like window replacements or a more efficient, you know, heating system or furnace, so that's something a homeowner could do as an individual.
Right, exactly. And, and some of our other recommendations too would be to have like a webinar or information session, maybe at the pop-up event, something about these current existing funding opportunities because they really offer people like a set of relief when it comes to, you know, retrofitting a house, a whole entire house that's been built a long time ago. Scranton is an older city, so yeah, absolutely. The advocacy could go beyond even like in-person meetups. You could do like a Facebook group. I don't know if you have like a local municipality website where you could advertise some of these funding opportunities, but they are existing already and available for use, and they would greatly impact your emissions inventory, especially in the three sectors, the residential, commercial, and transportation.
And something else we're seeing too is on-the-ground kind of education sessions. So in one example, in State College, a neighbor educated their neighbors about solar panels and the grants available to them, and got over 20 households to start the process to get solar. So even having almost ambassadors or people who work in nonprofits perhaps, or community groups that have, for example, the access to Latino communities or other communities around here, having some of those people educated and on-the-ground almost is another way to get people to feel like connected almost to some of these programs that do exist.
Or even a group of individuals that's willing to be trained, really cares about the topic, like a citizen advocacy group could be a fantastic asset to help spread the word.
Okay, thank you. Great ideas.
Thank you.
I have another question, if that's all right. I have another question, if that's all right. So we have, for example, the tree replacement program. Have you seen other communities, or would it be a recommendation for the city to implement some of these other types of regulations, like if you're building a parking lot, it should be covered with solar panels? Or if you're building a new truck sales depot that's 30,000 square feet, then there would be incentives or even mandates to put on solar panels on the roof? Have you seen that in other communities, or I guess, comma, for the city?
Yes.
Is that something that, that we've explored?
To answer your question, yes, I actually did a study on Cambridge, Massachusetts, and they implemented the Clean School Bus Program there, and it was extremely successful. And that's one thing that you could take a look at as maybe introduce that to your sustainable planner is that, or the consultant, is that there are a lot of other opportunities in that, in that area for this Clean School Bus Program, and that's an easy way to implement emission reduction within the community.
And another thing is that there's growing market for carbon offsets, for carbon credits. So what we're seeing is a lot of companies start to kind of sell these bonds. So let's say that there is an area that's going to be developed into a parking lot for any of the trees or anything like that that are being, you know, cut down, people will plant them in another spot to offset that impact. So there's growing markets for that. And for the solar panel ideas, yes, like even in State College, you know, our Walmart puts solar panels on their roof to have that energy source, and there's more and more technology coming out to make it so that we're adapting to some of the projects that we're continuing to develop.
I would like to echo our gratitude for you appearing here tonight. Much to think about. And my first question is a logistical one. Is this PowerPoint presentation available to us online after tonight, or where does this reside?
Yes, I can download it online, but we'd be more than willing to forward it to Craig or Craig's replacement.
Yep.
We'll forward it online, and we'll make sure we get it on the.
That'll be great.
Okay. City, city.
Perfect.
And the final thing I would have is an observation. If I remember correctly, the population of Lackawanna County is around 210,000 people. But government is fragmented into 39, I think, individual, very sovereign, independent entities. And climate change is no respecter of political boundaries or politician egos. I think that Pennsylvania, and certainly northeastern Pennsylvania faces a particular challenge because of that fragmentation. And if you have any magic you want to share with us on that, please feel free.
Yeah, unfortunately, there is no magic bullet, but.
Darn.
Yeah, I wish we could. I think that's where something like, and this is maybe an ideal world, we don't know the politics, but something like a deliberative forum, you know, meets people where they're at, so it's having people show up with their opinions and trying to meet them where they are and show them how maybe they've been, you know, misinformed about climate change and what that means and the benefits of taking climate action. Unfortunately, some people in those, you know, the six climate change characters I presented, those less engaged characters sometimes will never, you know, be reasoned with, which is a shame, but I think there's hope in the sense that there are a lot of people who, who do want to see some of these actions happen. And I just have to wonder if there's a way to extract those voices out and make them, you know, the forefront, but.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, I'd just like to thank you all for coming tonight, like, and speaking about this. It's just a really important issue, climate change, you know. I wish we, our cities recycled more, especially with waste, you know, we could do more, you know? All those bottles and beer cans, something like that, if they could do things like they do in Oregon, where they, there's a place you can put them and you get paid so much for doing it, you know? Things like that is what we really need to push, so the landfills don't fill up. That's just one. I know you guys are working on them all. Are you still in school? Are you?
For a week, one more week.
So this is your, what do you call it?
Final presentation, yeah.
Yeah, you should get an A, I'll tell you right now.
Our teacher's on the call.
Our professor's on the call.
My grandson's going to Penn State next year.
We, we heard that.
Who said that?
Our instructor.
Yeah, thank you very much for, for having them, by the way. We're just, we're listening in and, and watching them present from, from down below. Thank you guys so much for being such good attendees and paying attention and letting them do this. Yeah, it's great.
Yes, they're very grateful. Thank you so much.
Thank you, welcome.
We'll be following up with the materials that we have, if there are any resources, so thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. We only got one thing left, guys, in German, I guess. Motion to adjourn. Are we ready for your German? Or do we have anything else to discuss?
We don't have any old business on there. I think we're through all the items on the agenda, so.
Yeah, okay, so motion to adjourn.
To adjourn. Help me out, are we, are we in motion to adjourn?
I move.
There you go. So moved. Thanks for coming, everybody. Good job, good meeting.